solid.
Right.
You're not allowed.
All right, let's get things started.
Let's go.
Appreciate everybody being here. January twenty-third, seven o'clock, planning board. Few minutes. We put a couple of modifications into our center waiting.
Yep.
Then motion through the minutes. Kathy, second favor. Good, thank you. Okay. First order of business. Your new court holding subdivision. This is going to be a simple one. We are simply calling for a public hearing this evening as I am not taking present.
Yeah, I told I told them they did not need to come.
Great. So we will call for a public hearing. This is for combination of which having taken one lot dividing it into two. We are freely moving law. So. We will motion here. Our motion involve for public hearing on subdivision application for February the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, yes, seven of five. That would be our first time agenda. Have no moves. Second, please, on my favor. We'll see them in the thirteenth.
And they know that they have to provide those easements that were talked about. So those should be forthcoming hopefully. For now.
They swim to Z E A.
They did.
Yep. Fair. Well, because we're creating. New law. I'm going to shift things around a little bit.
We had some work sessions.
Yes. Yeah.
Maybe even felt like. Getting my last idea.
Yeah.
It was super business sounds on Boston Road. Bridge Streets subdivision, this electric. Yeah. To this on board changes.
Maybe four.
I know, it's just that last one.
Okay. All right, I am shifting things around a little bit because we've got another recommendation that we have to make to Z E A here. So it should be fairly quick because of the amended V I P loading dock. Give us a two second overview. Do we have those? If they're during just kind of in the board up the speed.
Yes, so I know the guards aren't yet, but we basically have to ship the dumpsters because of the canopy that we're adding. That dumpster or the haulers couldn't get in to access the dumpster dumpsters. So we had to shift them to the east. And add an enclosure to bring out to code. We needed a a recommendation to the zoning board for.
It's it's coming.
It's a dumpster in the front yard.
Yes, front yard. Yes, front yard lot. It's a corner lot. So there's two front yards and those are the only options. Considering we were already, we can't fit it in the side yard or the, yeah, two side yards, two front yards. We can't fit it in the two side yards. So. Really, it was the only option that the haulers could also access. Worked with them a lot, make sure that they could get in there. One of the major changes too, we have to take down much trees. We are proposing to put them back up or put in new trees eight foot tall. To, you know, do the screening the same way it was before from the from V I P Parkway. So that's our new enclosures over here.
But when we talked about this, this was although there are two front yards, V I P Parkway is kind of the secondary street. It's the up and down avenue.
It's East Malloy Road is down here. That's the big street.
Dumpster is pushed to the back. It is crazy fast around the dumpster itself.
Yep.
Is that where were they before?
They were just like right here, just just like twenty feet to the to the left, but they were straight on. So the haulers would come in this way where we're putting in this canopy. So we blocked like the direct path.
And you know, we you know, there's the path, maybe the next work session, make sure you're good at things and that's something that we because it still has to come down for final approval.
Oh, my God, I just just, I know that one of the criteria for the Z B A is that it's just a self-created issue and it sounds like this one is so. Wanted to see what they say. And it's a tight site. So.
Yeah.
It's all created, but.
Yeah, this is unfortunately the only option. Shooting for the canopy. Yeah. I'm Ellie Henderson. A L I D.
Other questions? Recommendation to the V A. Four requirements of the Z B A approved, the variance requested by the applicant, which dumpster to be permitted. Be located in the front yard will ninety-two dash ninety-three B. Three, the code requires that all refuge collection areas be located at the side or rear of the building. The variance would also require a thirty-five foot setback. When the yard adjacent to the IP Parkway replacement dumpster, this board has reviewed the location proposed. And has determined that notwithstanding the relative proximity to any Parkway locations, their best site for dumpster, considering the tight block constraints. And the unobtrusive nature location from the view of public. The management will refer back to the planning board per se to have a view. Who show that the final location within the setback configuration and design of the dumpster enclosure comply with all same design guiding standards. The modifications. Questions. Recommendation to the Doug, Kevin. Any on my favor? Great. Z J.
Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant for President in.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
So we worked together quite a bit to get these done. Um, for open these, we'd be all set, right?
Yeah, I hope so. I'm gonna miss you guys. No, actually, I'll be back next. I'll be back next meeting because I have another project, but um this I'm happy to get these two going here. So for this particular one, we had to move the gear over. We originally had that gear that's in that first parking spot all the way to the right. We had had that taken up two spots. So we moved it over. As you guys requested. On the bottom left-hand side of that screen, we put the notes in regarding regarding no no advertising. We also corrected, we had an error in the number of hotel rooms versus the number of parking spaces. So we fixed that as well. And that's in the note section on the very bottom left. Yeah, there you go. And just also updated a note about the drive aisle there to make sure that we're we're meeting that minimum requirement.
Motion to approve the plan last dated one six twenty-five for the installation of five level two dual port E V charging stations. All in findings and conditions. This board has reviewed the S V A F, the app, and eighty-nine eleven point four. Finding no significant adverse environmental effects from the project issues a negative secret declaration for the project. Board has reviewed the administrative review of the on dogging planning board dated ten thirty point four, which recommends approval. This is a minor modification to the existing site plan for the project. The existing site plan is in full force and effective except in a specific modified herein. And this group was made with a further cycle, further condition that this is other significant document, section documents. That been signed by planning board chairperson in the applicant requires that all the work shown be completed by the order of purchase of the bonds to the points to the issue. Changes, additions, or deletions to scope for materials for the site by not approved. There are subject to further section review pursuant to section nine two. Motion to approve. Kathy on my favor? Great. One. Let's slide right over to embassy suites. Do the same.
And so this also under one, just a minor revisions here, we moved the landscaping around so that we were screened from old columnar, still leaving a little bit of access there for us to get into the transformer if we need to. So that's just showing the landscaping that's happening on the left, all the way to the left there where the gear and the transformer is. Yeah, those the screening. Yep. Then there was another request just to move the bollards off of the pavement. We had originally have them on the pavement, which was impacting the parking stall length. So we've moved those. They'll still be positioned in a way that they'll be able to screen anybody from hitting for the actual charger itself, but they won't be shortening the parking stall at all.
Motion to approve the plan last dated one twenty-one, twenty twenty-five for the installation of seven level two and four level three dual port E V charging stations, all in finding the conditions. This board has reviewed the S P A F of the applicant dated nine sixteen twenty-four. Finding no significant adverse environmental effects in project issues a negative situation. This board has reviewed the administrative review of the on dogging planning board dated ten twenty twenty-four, which recommends approval. This is a minor modification to the existing site plan for the project and the existing site plan is full force and effect, except just for the modified herein and this approval is made with the further conditions that this approvals for the plans. With other documents. Site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson, the applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant. What if there it's a every year box included for compliance to be issued. Those changes, additions, or deletions to sort of work on materials. Further site plan review pursuant to kind of the white code. One ninety-two dash one twenty-two. I'll move this one. That will be second on my favor. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got actual. And this one is actually we've got two. Right? So we'll talk a little bit about the subdivisions and then we'll talk about the site plan itself. So.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kathleen Bennett. I'm an attorney with Bon Tonniquing King and I represent National Grid. I have Yancy Wells. He's the lead project manager for gas for National Grid. And then hopefully on Zoom, we have James Coffey with engineering, J R Russo, who's the lead environmental scientist, and then Jessica Lee's who's in-house senior counsel. And yeah, so the first item up is the subdivision. So I I think that we've addressed all the comments that we received on the subdivision, but essentially what National Grid is looking for is to recombine three lots. You know, for the the purpose of installing the, excuse me, natural gas pig receiver, and that's a pipeline inspection gauge that will allow for an internal inspection of the existing pipeline. So this is the receiving station. The launching station is in Cicero and it runs down to inspect and clean the pipeline. And they do that every seven years. Now, I could talk about more specifics when we get to the the site plan. I wasn't sure how you wanted to.
Yeah.
Provide it. So.
We'll just talk. I mean, I think there's there's two things that we'll have to address warnings. With D E C. Full ninety day review and everything, pretty aware of all of this. They've asked us to do the secret review. And so at our next meeting, the secret mission will have to be used. But the next meeting, we'll do a full secret review.
Okay.
Hopefully, in the meantime, after that. D E C gets their stuff out of the way. And then hopefully, the first meeting in March is the next A track meeting, which is when we will be able to actually do anything. On this one, but capture it correctly.
Does that sound?
In terms of 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 project timeline.
Of a final approval, right? So if we do seeker at the next available meeting, which is February thirteenth. Right. But then hopefully. We don't know what D E C is going to do, what they need to do so we can issue an approval. Right?
Right. So I I I don't know that D E C is going to issue an approval that quickly. I mean, certainly once we get past seeker and they start that consideration, this board could always condition the approvals on D E C issuing that permit, the
Yeah, I mean, we're a little unclear on that whole D E C process still at this point.
Right. And and the biggest issue for National Grid at this point is that they need to remove trees and they need to remove trees before March thirty-first because of the bat window. So that's that's really the biggest time constraint that they're under at this point. But they're also under that. They are.
You can say PTSD, but.
They are also under that constraint with D E C though as well. Right? I mean, they need both approvals. JR, jump in here if I'm saying something that isn't accurate.
Yeah, I can jump in. So in order to get a complete application with the D E C, seeker needs to be completed. So one, once the the negative declaration is issued. D E C can issue a notice of complete application. And then it would go out for a public comment. And then after that, they'd be able to issue the permit.
Was it, is the permit to impact the adjacent area or what's the
Yeah.
Go ahead, JR. Sorry.
Yeah, we don't have a jurisdictional determination. I think the assumption is that the delineated wetlands are connected to mapped D E C wetlands. So, yeah, right now they're working on the assumption that the wetlands are regulated. We've only got temporary wetland impacts, but we do have permanent wetland buffer impacts.
So do we have any sense of how long that D E C determination would take?
JR, I think you had some sort of idea how long it might take.
Yeah, so usually it takes you know, a week or two to get through the public comment. So if they issue a notice of complete application, then we just, you know, we contact the newspaper, they post it. So that that takes about two weeks usually. I have met with the D E C and gone over the project. You know, generally they're not too concerned with what we're proposing. You know, they recognize that the site is previously disturbed. So they are willing to work with us and didn't really see an issue meeting, meeting the timeline to cut trees by March thirty-first.
Well. I mean, there's so we've run into this issue before. The thirteenth is when we'll do seeker. You get that out of the way. You think between seeker and after advertising and public comment, you've got about four weeks of time.
But it sounds like.
So that that would get us. We could get to the thirteenth of March, which is the first meeting in March. If D E C pulls all their weight and gets it out of the way in the four weeks. And there's coordination, can you get back to the thirteenth, which will allow us to do the others. At the next possible meeting that we would have after that, if they don't get all that done, it would be March twenty-seventh. Which would leave you, you would probably have to pull the permit on Friday and have people working through the weekend to get whatever trees caught by the thirty-first.
What does seeker and D E C have to do with the subdivision specifically?
Well, it's all, it's when there's continued actions, they're supposed to go together and we'll just do secret on both of them. It doesn't. It's just easier to just do them both at the same time. We technically we could do it today, but it's it's not going to do them any good. We'll just do them together for next meeting.
So it's going to be kind of, I mean, you're going to be up against it. And I'll tell you right now that the town will not issue any sort of a tree clearing permit or anything ahead of that. So if we hit that March thirty-first deadline. Because the E C hasn't gotten their information back, there's nothing that we can do about that.
So it's it's not, it's not possible to have this board condition its approvals on receiving that.
Not to issue a tree clearing.
Yeah, because the tree can cancel.
Yeah.
It's still a good example.
Right. The site plan has to be approved.
Right.
Well, this she's saying can the site plan see contingent on the D E C approval.
But if D E C approval still hasn't come back on the site plan, it's in, it's not like you can go out and cut the tree.
Well.
You can issue a waiver on D E C.
Right. If if we don't get D E C approval, that that's that's a separate issue. We're not going to be able to cut trees, right? But if we had this approval and then D E C approved it, say you approved it conditionally on the thirteenth and D E C said, okay, we blessed the wetlands on the twentieth.
Starts twenty-first.
Right? We could start the twenty-first as opposed to having.
Like seven. We don't, we don't issue permits, so.
Yeah. Well, okay, no, I I I see what she's saying. Like, can we do seeker and the conditional approval on the same date? So we'll talk about that.
Okay. I appreciate the consideration. That's all I can answer for.
Do seeker on February thirteenth, twenty-two. Start our site plan, add everything on the thirteenth of March, first of March.
What she's saying is can we do it sooner? The what what does
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to at least do the seekers. You'd have to do seeker either. Yes.
Thirteenth, we do do the subdivision. And the additional site plan on the thirteenth of March, which then you do it conditionally. And she's saying if then D C, D E C comes back a week later and says, great, then we're done and.
They're good to go.
Yep.
Yes.
Otherwise, we're going to wait until the interest ends.
Right. Yes.
Missed the one. So we'll talk about whether that's.
They don't get it. They don't.
We'll get, we'll have an answer for you at the thirteenth when we use your.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
It is not because it's a non-bump. It's a little size.
So that covers site. Any other question on site aspect of it? As murky as that is. No. Subdivision.
Right. Right.
So now there's no other questions in the process, what we're doing, and then we'll talk about the site plan.
But so that you're good with the subdivision plan as it is and.
That looks fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So no other changes to the subdivision plan.
That's fine.
So let's talk about the site plan modifications to the site plan since the last we saw.
Just Kathy, can you provide a response to Mark's comments?
I don't know if he had comments for the subdivision, but he did for the site.
Right, just just for the site. So I I I addressed it in my letter, but it was literally just to say we included all the things you asked to be included in the map. So.
Yes, I am on. Yeah, I mean, it it it's a little difficult to hear you guys, but if the question was, is a subdivision plan okay from from an engineering standpoint? Yes, it is.
And you've seen the comment responses?
The comment responses, yes, and I've reviewed it and there there's another three or, well, I think there's three or four still items that have need to be addressed.
Okay, yeah.
And I I did, were those transmitted back to you?
Yes, Eric sent those along to us and so have some responses, not not everything at this point. So what what we did and one of the comments was that there's an inconsistency between sheet eleven A on this set of drawings and then sheet C four of the DDS drawings. So sheet C four of the DDS drawings is actually correct and will make the changes to this before you act on it or on the seeker on the thirteenth, but.
Okay, that that's simple.
Yeah, right.
Just make sure that you coordinate with Eric in terms of the deadline.
Okay.
Because it's not going to be the thirteenth.
Right, yes.
Wait this one.
Right, yes, right. And and so essentially what sheet C four shows is that the area of disturbance is point eight five acres. And that the gravel pad only extends approximately eighteen inches beyond the fence line. And if 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 you flip to the next sheet here, this is the one that's wrong. I think this is eleven A. You can download it. Yeah, so this sheet shows this area here is is way more on this sheet than it is on C four. It's much closer to the fence line. It will only be eighteen inches outside of that fence line. So it reduces the area of impact so that we're under an acre. So that will take me to the stormwater issue. I thought we had sort of addressed this with Eric and Doug previously because we were under an acre. And then I saw it came back up in the comments today that that the town is still looking for some sort of stormwater.
The lake creek requirements. So it's not a SWIP or D E C. It's something in the lake creek watershed of the town.
Okay.
So Mark will be able to explain it better than me, but it has to do with the ten-year runoff pre and post storm versus the hundred here. Mark could state it better, but those are town requirements separate from D E C SWIP requirements.
Okay.
It just has to deal with the spec that the site is in the lake creek watershed.
Okay, all right. So JR, did you have any questions about meeting that?
Yeah, so initially I think we tried to do that. I have our consultant looking at it again. The problem was there's just not much room on the site. You know, we had some stormwater basins shown initially. D E C did not want any stormwater basins in the in the regulated wetland buffers, so we removed those. Yeah, so basically it's it's pretty challenging with the size of the station and the site and the wetlands to to figure out a plan for that. We are looking into it again to see if there's any any options.
So I'll ask that you and Mark talk and kind of get that addressed.
Okay.
One, yeah, that's fine. Feel free to get ahold of me. One thing I will offer up is I I don't know if these current drawings still show, and I think they do. But there is a cross section gravel, the gravel pad section, which was designed to meet New York State D E C SWIP requirements is shown on your plans. I I don't explicitly know if you were intending on doing that, but it does provide stormwater. You know, quantity mitigation and you you might be able to work that out, but if so feel free to get ahold of me. We can discuss it further and and try and come up with a solution here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We want to make sure if we're if we're going to be on for that February thirteenth seeker, that there's nothing that would that Mark would be able to report to us that it's all mitigatable. Then we'll find.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there was another comment with respect to street trees. So we added street trees on sheet on DDS sheet C two, you can see the street trees with various varieties as provided by the town's guidelines. So when National Grid looked at it, it looked at it from the perspective of security. And National Grid likes to have a line of sight to their sites for safety purposes, so that if on a drive-by, they could see if someone, you know, had somehow managed to to get in, get over the fences, tampering with with the pipes and whatever. So the the vegetation that was chosen was chosen with that in mind. And JR, I'll let you speak to that because I know you worked on that part of the plan.
Yeah, it's not this sheet. I don't, it might be the next one.
C two. Yeah, it's that one.
Yeah, so we tried to put them as close to the road as we could. The the highway boundary, there are some underground utilities in the way. So those will be planted as close as they can to those utilities and the highway boundary. We needed some separation from the underground pipe in the existing driveway there, the proposed pipe. And yeah, so we really just have a straight line of various species along the front of the station there. There's a a schedule of tree species on the sheet as well, I believe.
More trees than buy some cameras. Honestly.
And have your drive-by, pull away and actually take a look. It's in a drive-by.
Yeah.
Yeah, because what do they get to see from the road?
It's in a residential. So essentially residential, we're talking about, you know, possibility for business transition across the street and it's, you know, I think we need to respect the quality of the neighborhood.
Quality of the neighborhood, that, and I, I, I appreciate the need for safety, security and inspection of the site. And you're interested in that, but I think we're interested in what I just mentioned.
I'm much easier to.
More neighbors.
Uh, yeah, I think a denser screening is preferred. It's already a pretty dense area anyway, right? That, in that corner.
Uh, further down, they're not right there.
Well, not right there, but page bottom, right?
Right.
So, I mean, having those street trees is. In the right direction, certainly. Right.
Okay, so you're looking for more trees, is that what I heard?
Ideally, I mean, or just denser vegetation, I mean, using something that has a little bit more of a visual. Barrier.
Okay.
I think you heard the sentiment of the board, like, we appreciate what it is and what it's used for and, but. We don't want to see it.
Right, understood.
Oh.
Our neighbors don't want to see it, yeah.
So are you looking for maybe staggered trees to increase the density or just closer together?
Uh, sir. Before you, we respond to that, tell me again, what is the, the security fencing? Around that.
So we're gonna, right, so we've changed the security fencing, um, to have it be the, um. Palisades style security fencing, right, we've completely removed the barbed wire, uh, it'll be a black steel fence approximately.
All the way around.
Yes, eight feet in height, um, very similar to what you see here in this photograph. So that, that will be the fencing, and, and I believe that this is, is this on another site in, in DeWitt? Jimmy, or is it?
Actually, they utilize this out in Buffalo, I was able to get a couple of pictures of it, but they, they look just about the same as what you see here in the, uh, in the ad. I had to ask the guy whether or not he got them from the ad, but they're actually of our site, it, it does look very, very different than what we usually have in our normal facilities. And we would be going with the, sorry, sorry, we'd be going with the one on the right there, that's called the gradient top, that kind of curves out. That would pretty much be what you're gonna be looking at there.
Yeah, can I, can I ask a question there? Uh, it's Mark Parrish here, um. Yeah, so thi- this, this, this sheet, this is one of the comments I think that's still outstanding is, I, I didn't see anywhere where you specifically called out. The style, the height and the color of the fences, are there some notes I'm missing or something?
No, there's not, Mark, unfortunately, like, we, we're trying to get somewhat of a, a confirmation with the folks here to make sure that this was a path that we were, you know, looking to go down. So we were gonna, you know, kind of. Bring it to the team's attention here and the folks here on, on the board and, and ensure that they're on board with it, and then we can add those comments in.
Okay.
To the plans, so no, you didn't miss anything, it was more or less, you know, this is what we came back with and hopefully, uh, you know, everybody agrees that this is a better, brighter path forward.
Any concerns on that one?
So it looks like you can order the fence with the, um, verticals closer and farther apart, so when you provide us that detail, if you can just let us know. The distance between them, because when we're looking up a few of the pictures, some of it provides a substantial amount of blockage, like when you're looking at it right there. But then when I go and look at some other images, they're spaced apart much further and instead of having like a four or six inch opening, it looks like it might have a, an eighth.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, uh.
You're looking at the gauntlet fence.
Yeah, the gauntlet, and honestly, sorry Kathy, but it looks like we're looking at three and a quarter separation between the, between them. Gap between them.
Yeah, so like, like Jenny was saying, that just needs to be called out on the drawings.
Yep, absolutely, yep, yep, we just didn't want to get, you know, get too far ahead of ourselves and just ensure that, you know, everybody was on board with this direction.
Yep.
Eight feet.
Eight feet. How tall is the gear behind the fence?
Less than eight feet.
Yeah, it's about a three foot center line, so it will not protrude above the fence line.
And the vegetation, the trees, how, how tall?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How tall were the vegetation, vegetation and trees?
J R, how tall were the trees?
Uh, these were the, I think the under the wire trees, they had a range, um.
Measured by caliber, so they're proposing three inch caliber, so not really goes by height, but at least six feet, I would say. If not more, but yes, I believe there are some overhead wires, so they're, they're like crab apples and smaller trees that won't interfere with the height of the wires, but. Yeah, they might be ten feet taller. A little bit tall. How's that, how worse it's gonna get? It looks like that space in front.
Where's the fence located on the side compared to the screen trees?
Yeah, behind it.
Like, can you go back up to?
Yeah.
Let's not see the difference, separation.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, so it gets wider.
Okay, so the fence is this line.
Take a picture of the screen trees and instantly start to stagger in there, grow the width out as the triangle opens up here to really get the block used for. That's a straight angle, but from the, the perception angles, which is the drive angles. On the other side of the road and do the same thing, fill in the corner.
Yep, and I think the staggering would be.
Yeah.
You capture that?
This fence is gonna help.
Yes, I did, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, and then I think the, the last comment that we got today was about the, the lighting. Um, and I think what I said on my comment letter, and I went back to check it to make sure that I, I, I didn't say something incorrect. Um, so there, there will be lighting and I think that is the lighting design, is the lighting is there for emergency purposes. Um, and that, you know. The site's not going to be, um. Occupied, right, they run this every seven years, other than, you know, maybe when they drive by and do a. Visual, um, so the lighting will really only be used during the two week span. Uh, in which they're cleaning or inspecting, they do it in the fall or the spring, and so the lighting is there for emergency purposes in the event that they're there. After dark during those times.
It's not on for six years and.
Nope.
Eight or weeks.
Right, that's, that's my understanding is that unless there's a, a different type of emergency, it would not be on for six years and fifty weeks, but.
Yeah, Kathy, you're correct, you're correct, it, you know, this will only be done during the operations and when we run these tools, we like to run them, you know, pretty much not, you know, as much as we can within that two week period. So sometimes the days get a little long, but there won't be any like spotlight or anything like that, the site won't be normally lit. With, you know, with the exception of when we're doing the operations.
So I guess I've got two, two comments, um. There's a detail provided and I, and I don't see on the plans though that show. The quantity or, or where these poles are going to be placed.
Oh, let's see, I, we might have, uh, I can, I can provide that to you, Mark, it might not be in this set.
Yep, that, that's fine, um. Uh, so, you know, just note that, and I guess secondly, I guess stay, if you can just stay on that detail.
Actually, right there, right here, sorry.
I was gonna say, I think, I think it is called out.
Yep, right here on the, the red, the red dotted here.
Okay, alright, okay, that's good, so you've got a few, so I guess if you go back to that detail, though, um. These are not, you know, obviously are not compliant with the town's regulations, they're not full cutoff type fixtures, they are floodlights. Uh, so, uh, the board needs to decide if that's acceptable or whether this needs to comply with, you know, the, the code requirements.
Okay. Dark sky compliance.
Yep.
Who can't see the property? As the neighbors, otherwise some.
Yeah, do you have somebody that can do a photometric plan?
J R, Jimmy, do we have somebody that can do a photometric plan on this?
I can ask, yeah, we can go back and I can, I can find out.
Okay.
I guess.
We'll try and get one done if we can.
Yeah, I guess what I'll say to you though is. Uh, there is a lighting code in the town of DeWitt, it's, it's outdoor lighting, um. Uh, portion of the code, it's not part of the zoning code, but there is a code and you should look it over and. Comply, I guess, is the best you can.
Oh, understandable, no, understandable.
Yep, yeah, just, I just want to make you aware of it, so.
Yeah, no, and I think where we were there, Mark, too, is like being these, these were gonna only be used for temporary, I'm not sure how far down we went as far as detail with that, so I'll, I'll check into that for sure.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
How, how are you bringing power service to the site, underground or overhead? Oh, generator?
Jimmy, how are you bringing power to the site?
I think you go back to that detail, it, it goes back to a pole that's already pre-existing. The, I believe, I believe the next page up, on page nine.
Yeah, it looks like it's underground from the pole.
Yep, yeah, we're coming right down our current pole.
It's new underground service, not an overhead one, right?
Yes.
Correct, yep.
So. I think that covers the comments.
Yeah, I think that was everything.
Um, are there other questions other than that? We'll plan to do a seeker at the next meeting. And we'll get answers and pass forward for you for the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Good.
Yeah, we're just. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Who's the kindness to email?
Thank you.
I can't see any names.
Yes, yes, sure will, yeah, okay, alright.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy, I really appreciate it, it's a Bill Skar tonight, by the way.
Okay. Before we get into the football.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Pathology.
Yeah, I know, right? Oops, sorry.
So. With pathology. At this point, uh, from the state. You're off the Z B A, right?
Definitely, no, we're back, so we've, we've obtained, we've obtained our verances, which we did, uh, Tuesday. We'll track dates, so we're all set with that, um, we responded to all of the comments, Eric passed a couple back yesterday, one which, uh, I just. Sent back the response we already had, it was, we got approval from W U, from the, uh, Ontario County for.
Right.
Left contact county web for the SWIP, you know, they didn't want to review anything. Um, there was one, uh, in regards to, uh, lighting, which I wanted to discuss with the board because the, there was in regards to foot candles of, uh, exceeding point one over the property line. The only place we have that is at the intersection of the second entrance drive. Um, and there's two reasons for that, one is we're removing existing pole along the right way or roadway there, we're just putting a new one along the roadway. So it technically illuminates off our property line into the roadway, but we also want more than. Less than point one foot candles at an intersection as well, so that's why there's more light on that one pole, and it's not really that much more, it's like. Like five point six, something like that, but that's why we exceed the limit at that one location, so we would ask the board to approve that scenario. Um, I think it exists higher than that today, it's just again, we're moving the pole that falls within that drive, we're putting a new one. That's, that's private or town road. It's private, private drive. So that was the one other comment that, you know, we would, you know, we would like to leave that hole there and still have enough light at that intersection.
So we can, we can.
And along the road as well, we'll, we'll review it. Provided. And then the last remaining comment was in regards to coordination with, uh, WEP on the, uh, acid waste chamber that we have there. So that's like secondary treatment for, you know, diluted chemicals and stuff that might be coming out of the building, so they asked for a full list of. Chemicals and stuff that the building would be discharging, which we, uh, supplied with all the M S D sheets and everything, so they're reviewing that, it's quite possible we don't need any permitting from them, they just wanted to review everything, that's a code required. A structure anyway, um, to, to be able to handle any of the sinks and stuff that are in the labs, you know, they have highly diluted. Testing chemicals and things like that, so we just have to pass through that and let it go, so we're, we're just in the process of completing their review with them, we've already provided them ourselves, so.
Right. So then the last. I think the biggest part that we're going to talk about today was architecture, talk about the building itself.
Yep.
You know, we spent a lot of time on the site, you know, we spent a little bit of time on the building, but I think we'd like you to walk us around the building. Give us the, the full rundown on that.
We should.
Yes.
Yes. Sidewalk rise. Yeah, sidewalk. Let's start with that first, um. Part of the sidewalk extension network is up there along Fly Road, so that's the sidewalk that goes up to Fly Road. As part of the corridor and as we develop the rest of that corridor up there, um, we're looking to extend that sidewalk network along there. So we'd like you to try and find a way to incorporate certainly near side of the street sidewalk. On that section of Fly Road. There.
Does, does the town have a limit or anything? I mean, there's no sidewalk in proximity of the site?
Not yet, but as we, I mean, that corridor is being developed quite. Heavenly and quickly, I mean, T T M's going in and.
O N X.
Burn and O N X and, and all these, so that network's gonna get connected pretty quickly.
So is there a, a limit, I mean, is it within the property boundary?
It's probably within the property.
So you're, okay, so we, we can look at that, I think there's a pretty severe slope now in terms of approval process, is that something that can be handled? As another phase of the project, not necessarily hold up site plan approvals, because there's a lot that goes along with that, I mean, whether it's gonna be D O T coordination, D O T permitting. All that, that we're gonna have to run through approvals, that's gonna really lengthen the project if we get into trying to, I mean, we also know that survey out there. Yeah. Highway, so we can.
The condition would be that the sidewalk is required from that entire frontage, you just have to develop the technical details to make it happen.
Right.
That's what we're talking about.
Right.
And that would come later.
Make it that accuracy.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would assume that you could get the, the survey done, the design done, and then well before you get any construction.
Right.
You know, and that can be rolled into whatever construction contract you have, but. We, like Doug was saying, we can do conditional in terms of the, the sidewalk being designed and finalized as part of that. It will be part of the condition for. Certificate law.
Right. Well, we, we would obtain site plan approvals and have.
Yep.
Yeah. Just, we know we're up against.
Right, I mean, I think we certainly want to work with you and help you and recognize that, but we are trying to connect the rest of that, and that is part of all of that development that we're with.
Yeah.
So. Um, you can, you can handle that.
Yeah, so then there's, there's one on the site plan side of things, the other thing, will the, will the board also provide site plan approvals? That you're familiar with this new requirement that D E C just jumped out and everybody with jurisdictional determination.
Sure.
Did you do seeker on this? Sorry, thank you so much, thank you.
We declared, uh, new agency, but I don't.
Did we just declare?
Determined.
Oh, alright, I'm getting this. I mean, the time has passed, I mean, we're funding, we're, we know that's not the issue. Yeah, what do we do about that? What do you, what, what say you? Cause we are, we're just taking a poll here, as I have with my colleagues for the last week.
Well, I mean, certainly, uh, we all know where the project stands, I mean, we've been through, uh, complete delineation on the site, there are no wetlands even close to the site that are state regulated, they're all. Well east of four eighty one, um, we went through an entire delineation process with the Army Corps, got a non-jurisdictional. Um, letter from the Army Corps, so D E C's kind of coming out of these new regulations, that you gotta go through this initial J D phase with them, and they have up to ninety days. To give a feedback, and that's, I mean, it's, well, no, they have ninety days to give just a, a determine, which. I, I can't imagine we wouldn't get because we have no state wetlands even near the site, but they do have ninety days to respond just to our initial. Sending in, which we've done, I sent it in immediately, um, because we just found out about this last week as well. Um, so, but it's a real stick, it's a real stick in the spokes to, to hold up the project for, for tree clearing mainly, I mean.
And that, that's where. But I think, yeah, is that how we handle? Similar to the.
What, what is that, how, what?
I'm not sure that's what we do right now, but with this one, with your delineation, like, was, was that just with the Army Corps or?
Well, that's only, it's, yeah, that's all that's required is the Army Corps, because there are no, there, previous to this, the process was if there were state, I mean, we did a full delineation on the site, right, we had our delineation for. There are no state regulated wetlands or buffers adjacent to or around the site, so then it's kicked over to, are there any Army Corps? Which we did a full delineation, we had wetlands, they came out, they looked at them, they went through their process and they said. Which we did a full delineation, we had wetlands, they came out, they looked at them, they went through their process and they said they're non-jurisdictional, so. That's, I mean, in twenty-seven years I've done projects, that's where it ends, you know, I mean, you don't have to worry about it from that point. This new process, the E C is really.
Did they say there was nothing bad, or that it was?
What's that?
Did they say there were no wetlands there, or that?
Did who's? Army Corps, yes, we have the letter, which we provided, it's a non-jurisdictional letter.
I just gave a lineback copy of the letter as well.
Yeah, I mean, they, they had it on, we sent it to them.
The problem is, we're going to start having to do this for every single project, and yeah, sure, we can. Just move everything contingent on it, because we don't know how this is going to go with D E C, not words, not this project, but just in general. Um, they did, when I talked to D E C, mentioned that they might. Might be able to push big projects a little faster.
Yeah.
I don't know if this being with the state, if there's any pressure that can be applied that way.
Yeah, they're.
And did.
And they're in a different fold, they have wetlands on their side.
This is our huge project right now, um. But, yeah, it's a mess.
I, I had, I've sent two emails back to the gentleman that sent you those. Sent you the letter. Well, you know, and I sent him the Army Corps jurisdictional determination. Um, you know, we'd be happy to send the wetland report as well, if they want that, but, I mean, you could certainly see that this project's been in track for. A couple of years now, we've been through all of our due diligence, there's certainly not any wetlands mapped anywhere near the site. Um.
Well, hopefully that application gets turned around quickly because of that.
I know, hopefully it's not going to get us to March thirty-first, unfortunately ninety days is into Ju-, you know, April.
I don't know, we have to discuss what we can do, we really have to talk about what we can do.
Yeah.
It's very, when I tell you that I have been on the phone with multiple of my colleagues, who I've talked to, you know, from near other towns. Um, and everyone's trying to figure out what to do.
Yeah. We have several projects that are, I think, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, they're not providing a lot of information and. Really to ask.
Yeah, they, they did, they did, they, they had a, they had a webinar, and it was like. I mean, they didn't say anything about projects that were motion not being grandfathered in, which is kind of absurd.
Not because we asked them.
I know, I.
It's that projects that have received site plan approval or.
Or a negative declaration.
Yeah.
I mean, from a practical point of view, what, what would the consequences be if they came back? With something you hadn't expected, you know, is that really what we're talking about? Is that we would need to react to something? And that would change the site plan in some way?
Um. Well, yeah, I mean, if they came back with something else.
But I'm going to ask you, what would, what would it be? What would you expect it could be?
No, it's more just the delay in timing of, if they, if they have pulled out to day eighty-nine, we've already passed our window of opportunity to clear the site. That's, that's a problem, um.
Season.
Yeah, I mean, then, then you're all the way back to November before you can start clearing trees again on the site, that's, that's the real. I mean, certainly, yeah, if they have a wetland that they find, but.
At one point. You mentioned that hiring the environmental. Somebody to go out and essentially certify the site, something that.
The Batman? They, they came up for another project, the Bonnie Construction Project, where the applicant was considering hiring a third party. To go out there, but that was before we learned about this, I don't think that.
I mean, they said every ground disturbance.
No, I know, but I'm just.
No, they're talking about the bats situation.
Now, bats is a whole nother can of worms, because the studies are very complicated and stuff.
I know, but I'm just, like, if, if we get our hands tied and put you past that mark, like. If, if we can't do anything, it puts you past that. Gets you out to November, what other avenue do you have, and is it getting that Batman?
I, I could speak to that, I, we hired him.
Okay. I'll see you later, Fiddy.
Whatever the Batman is.
Nine candle.
Yes.
He had fifteen, fifteen hundred bottles, we just hired him.
They'll tell you in fifteen minutes.
And, and the consequences are. Um, if they find a bat, they actually, they put these nylon nets up and they catch a bat. Yeah, I said, what do I got to do, he says, well, he says, you're going to have an eighty acres, he says, you'll have to go buy. At least sixteen acres in someplace in the vicinity. Then you're going to have to create a habitat, so that's probably half a million dollars. He says, probably take about three.
Twenty-two years, so I remember first, or if you figure out what's going on.
The size of the acre you have to give per bat.
What, what's double your site.
Is there anyone? I made it have a.
Alright, alright, but we, we wanted to. We wanted to get the input of the board and do what the board wants us to do before, and then we will apply our. Collection to try to get the D E C and point it to the top of this. But we got a lot of work to do here, so that's why we're kind of coming from an aspect, it's to the unconditional site plan approval. And while, you know, separately, we're working the D E C to get it done, you know, and I can see us, you know. Buying for permit on March twenty-eighth.
It's unfortunate you were sitting there when we were talking about P T S D.
We all blacked out, we didn't even rest, I didn't call it out, but.
I haven't heard John said one. We got to at least enjoy the game.
Yes.
But that, but the thought was, is how do we, how do we work with the board here, so we get everything in mind.
That's, so that's, that's what we're trying to figure out, with the old D S, D E C, that we, even with it. Can't do a conditional site plan approval, because we're still.
D C, D C. And that's part that has to be done before we say yes.
Well, well, that's, we can make it condition on D E C, but that's not going to do any good. We're still waiting to deep for.
No, that, that could do good, because if we were to get that on February thirteenth or whatever, next seeker, you had a condition. February fourteenth, the letter comes in from D E C. John on February fourteenth or fifteenth can start construction, if we have to wait till.
Well, that's what National Grid's hoping.
Well, they're a little bit deeper, because they have a permit to obtain, they have buffer impacts and stuff like that, so it's a little bit different certain area, we have a site that's been cleaned by the Army Corps for wetlands. We've done our delineation, we don't have any impacts. So it's a little different scenario than having to wait for a permit, I think they're a little bit deeper.
Why can't we do a conditional site plan that says that there is something that says bad, then the site plan is.
Probably, it's not bad, because it's going to be literally every single project, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's a big, that's a big picture.
There might be projects where we're not sure that there aren't going to be wetlands, and then we set up. Well, we, we, well, we have to take it on a case-by-case basis.
It's a revocable site plan.
Yeah, like, just make a revolver, if D E C says something, then it's null. Can't start a law, D E C.
Yeah, I mean, this, this project has, has a report and has a determination from the Army Corps about wetland.
Yeah, so I think we're, aside from that issue right now, we're talking about all the other projects that are going to be following behind you guys.
Precedent issues.
Setting precedents.
But they've got a lot from the Army Corps. If I can, if I can, I'd like, I'd like you to do this. I want you to send. A letter. To the board as to why you think your project, you know, you don't have the WEP, you don't have the delineating, or you got this legislative court, blah, 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 blah. Things that might, I'm not saying, I'm not speaking for the board, that might be able to have the board come to a conclusion that we would do a conditional. Approval. A seeker and a conditional.
And supportive.
And supportive, and then, I mean, we'll, we'll review it separately, but you're going to make the best argument for yourself. And then we're going to have to discuss internally. You know, how, how this is going to play for precedent. And is everyone going to come and say, oh, you did it for pathology, now do it for us? So we need to see why yours is more special than everyone else, and then we'll, and then we'll. Be able to decide if there can be a conditional D, uh, approval. D E C, then you still have to get, like, it's going to be great, we have this, ah, hurry up, D E C, right? Um.
And, and I think, you know, when you talk about setting precedent, I wouldn't understand. The precedent probably goes away once you pass the bat deadline of April first. I mean, we, we wouldn't, we would, we would normally wait the ninety days of the D E C, if we didn't have the bat deadline.
Right.
Right.
So, so in terms of precedent. It's based on the fact that these new regs are. Just, just in, sometimes in the middle of approval, so we could say this is less.
No, that's the middle of approval.
Less than. Well, I'm not worried about they did it last the nineties before the bat date.
And, and they knew the bat problem was up.
Yeah, so you've got, you've got, on the site-related issue, you've got your directive to give us the bullet points, make an argument, so that we can talk about it in turn. That's site-wise, it just.
So we'll get, we'll get that before the meeting, I, we're on the thirteenth, is the next?
I would, I would.
No, we're going, we're going to get in a couple of days.
I would say in a couple of.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we're getting that to you before the thirteenth, so are you able to act on seeker on the thirteenth?
Maybe.
Possibly, yes.
See what. Well, can we, um. We might be able to add time seeker anyway, much like, you know, we bifurcated, but, um. That's again, not going to do you a lot, but.
Well, we got to get these things done.
Exactly, yes.
Jamie, I think also would help for us to go to the state, they have to put pressure on D E C, if we have a conditional approval as opposed to. See if you can get some leverage from the state, and we'll see what we can do with it, if you guys say it's conditional, if we go back to the governor's office or something, then that'll help.
So with, with this one, if we address the site issues, we don't have any other site issues. And we've addressed the architecture, which we're hopefully going.
Hello.
Yeah.
Right now. Then we talk about. The sidewalk gets. Put onto the drawings as.
Yep.
Used to be finalized, designed, ordered with U T, all of those things are taken care of, the seeker taken care of. With the conditional, hopefully we can get this thing.
But quick, the sidewalk's dedicated to the town?
What?
The sidewalk could be dedicated to the town along Fly Road, or said.
I.
No, it would probably be, it'd have to be the county, wouldn't it, the county right away?
No, what's, what'll happen, one of the likely counties will come back and say. Um. You have to get a work permit through the town, and the town, Jim's right, the town will take, take that, the structure out, it'll be dedicated to the town. The town will own it, yeah. And a county, by the way.
So for the purposes of the site plan approval drawings, can we just show on the site plan, or do we have to add this thing completely, as I?
Well, just show, show it on the site plan and put a night on there.
Yeah, because there's going to be some work to get it done. To build.
Right.
Insert, talk to, just coordinating with that data.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to be designed.
Okay, we'll talk about the architecture.
We, we built you up to the architecture.
I know, I'm also, I'm also trying to get everybody out here.
I have, I have to, so Gabe, uh, Gabe Comstock from Slam, the architect, he's on, on, online, and he's going to run through me. Um, I think it's his first one right here.
Yeah.
Gabe, you wanted to share your screen, is that easier?
I think this.
Uh, it's up to you, yeah, if you've got it, I can, I can do either way, whatever you guys prefer, you've got it up now, that's fine.
We got it there, Gabe.
Tends to move different.
It's like a slide.
This is on a, like, live, so it might move faster.
Alright.
I'm sorry, I, I lost that, so do you want, do you want me to share, or is this okay?
No.
Ah, okay, okay, gotcha, let me go ahead and turn my camera off, I'll save some bandwidth too, just in case.
Um, so, hi folks, Gabe Comstock, I'm the senior design lead with Slam, um, I've got about nine or ten slides here, these are. Not technical, these are more qualitative, and I think that's where we need to have the starting conversation. I think most of you have kind of seen the general idea of the building, but let's go ahead and skip forward to the next page. Um, just a quick, um, this is actually, um, an orientation on the left-hand side. Bear with me a second here, let me pull this up so I can see it a little better on my end. Um. North, if you see the arrow on the, above that diagram, is off to the right here. Uh, the existing bone and joint building is squared off in the, the lower left corner. And then, um, the proposed site right there, where it says upstate, is where the new building is going to go. The arrows are just showing, the red arrows, what you see of the, the new building from forty-one, which is the frontage, and then, of course, from Fly Road. The building will kind of be poking through a little bit of the canopy of those, what's left of, uh, the, the wooded area there along the Fly Road. Uh, then the, the yellow line is the, the, the drive into bone and joint, the, the boulevard, if you will, for our new. Higher traffic area, uh, the site plan you're all familiar with, off to the right, I'm not going to go into too much detail on that, I thought I'd leave it in here just in case there's anybody that need to get some orientation, if you spin that thing a click. Uh, counterclockwise, that'll line up with the plan on the left, so, any questions on that? Just, uh, an orientation. Okay, so next page. Um, quick triptych here, I just think it's worth, um, talking a little, or, or revealing a little bit about the quality of the site. It's a beautiful location, you can see bone and joint, uh, the existing bone and joint off to the left over there. The car on the road in this image is that boulevard, the, the drive main drive into the site, the body of water here is the, a, uh, retention base, and. Um, there's another one right behind the camera, so there's this nice little walkway between the two, beautiful sight, but. On that note, go to this next slide. Uh, I want to talk a little about bone and joint, because I want to make it clear that when we design buildings, especially here in a, a, a medical campus, as this is. Uh, with these two buildings, um, there should be a relationship between them, and, and we've got a large existing building with these. If you look at the parapet on it, I, if, if I get into my architecture hat a little bit, there's some cassellation going on, up and downs, um, it's a pretty regular ordered box. Um, nice ordered fenestration, the window punches, it's pretty, pretty boxy, nice ruddy, warm color. Um, the lower right corner shows the, you know, just the standard aluminum. Kind of the, a new, a more modern take on the front canopy, some sweeping and curving going on. So with, with those languages in mind, I think that's, we wanted to pick up some of the DNA of the, the, of that building and bring it into the new building, so there's a, a sistered relationship and some. Some homogenousness to the site, so next slide. Um. This is a rendering, I think John may even have this rendering with him, if, if, uh, he was able to pull, put this on a board. Um. You're seeing a, a perspective of the, of the new building, and this is a view that, uh, if you were a drone and you were flying in along the road from Fly Road, this is the view you'd see. Uh, on the right. Fly, um, incidentally, the bone and joint building is just, if you lobbed a football over the rendering, it's right on the backside down there, so if you look down the end of the road, you see a truck kind of turning in, that's the. Access to a little bit more parking down on the backside, the southish side and the dock. And if you come around this near entrance here, you'll come swinging into the, the main parking and what would be. I guess technically considered the front of the building, but it's a, it's designed beautifully into the landscape, so that all three of these primary facing facades are all sort of front. Buildings of the building, if you will. Um, one thing of incident, though, is that those, those brownish-looking panels, although I love them as wood, that could be fun. Uh, they're anticipated to be, uh, a copper metal clad, a, a metallic, met, copper panel. And, um, the samples that I hope was, was able to make it into the room there without me. Um, good, okay. The copper, the copper sample is actually what that ribbed, um. It's a ribbed panel that will sit in that inset, um, should be sort of that flashy, warm, um, relationship with bone and joint. So the next slide, um, brings up a photograph of a little bit more of the. Uh, rest of the materials on, on the building, and I've tagged them here just so we can walk through them, I know this is high level, this is not a formal board, I know we're just going through kind of an introduction here. Um. In particular, though, the glass on the, the two panels on the top, those are, there's a spandrel on the left and a vision glass on the right, those are the two. Main vision and spandrel glass components in the metallic or upper two stories of the building, the lighter color of the block. Um, and then the, the lower two panel samples, uh, glass samples are a spandrel on the left and the vision on the right, you'll see a little bit darker color here. This is intentional, this is so that, that, that lower plinth, which is the stone number three item, which is the first story. Um, it's a four-inch fluted C M U, kind of a, a legacy product from. Uh, and I dare to say this, just to not make it sound scary to everybody, but, uh, you saw more of it in the eighties, but we're repurposing it in a very. Beautiful and modern way with, uh, each block is a darker, it's a, it's a darker aggregate with a. A color matched grout, uh, flush grout, so the blocks disappear. Um. Anyway, the glass that sit in that lower plinth, because it's a, a lab space, um, rather than being so bright and open and airy and, and kind of flowing through and visually available to the public. Uh, we kept that a little darker, so those panes in this, in these, the vertical light slots you see, you see the darker slot that runs up to the roof, and you see a little bit of the cassellation like bone and joint has, where the. The parapet's pulled away with those slots, they're a little darker. Um, each one of those slots has glass in it, so the end of a corridor will line up. Pretty typically through the building with one of those slots as they're strategically placed, so that. No matter where you're at inside of this internalized technical building, you've got some orientation while you're ambulating inside to get, um. Where the outside is, what time of day it is, and you just got some daylight kind of connecting the space. Uh, and then, as I'm rambling on here, I'll, I'll finish up by saying what you're getting circulated with are those, those numbered items in the lower left corner of that image on the left. So not much in front of you, and I realize that, but, um, item number two is the graphite colored sample of. The metal panels that will be, uh, primarily on the screen on the roof, also a ribbed. Um, feature, just like the C M U, so that we get this really simple, nice, clean, dark. Shadow line, vertical shadow lines throughout the day as the sun moves across the face of these surfaces. Not only on the cap that's covering the mechanical equipment on the roof, but also in the, the built. More rustic, uh, plant on the bottom, and then as we get around the back, some of the screening at grade will also be that same material. We, we haven't complicated with too many things. Uh, the item number four there is a clear anodized, it's the larger metal sample, that's the, the metal that actually creates the frame. That you see pulling out around what we're calling the jewel boxes, the storefront glass with the copper components in them. So I'm gonna take a breath there and pause for a moment before we move on, and just ask if there's any, any questions, thoughts, or concerns so far.
No, good.
Okay, thanks. So next slide. Uh, and I should probably mention, sorry, if you can go back one real quick, I forgot to mention that, that you can't see the color chip real well, but the, the Pantone sample up or left, yeah. The, the metal panels are, are actually three, three colors of, of a very light, cool gray. They're, they're only one tint off of each other, and you can see that in the rendering pretty well. The rendering captures that variation, the variegation. Pretty realistically, so if you now go to the next slide, we've got the, the modeled render, um, elevations in here. Now, these aren't true to color, they're just what the model spits out, so they're kind of darker and flat. Uh, but you see some, um, renderized images, um, you know, the three off to the, the right there. And incidentally, as I'm speaking, if you see the, the little yellow S W and the green N W, those are the, the. Cardinal or the solar orientations of the facade, since we're at an angle to cardinal directions. Uh, for those of you that are interested in what, how the building is capturing sun and being exposed to the element, or the climate. The sun, um, and the, that's color coded over to those images on the right, since we, we're kind of spinning around this building in a way that's disorienting, I think. To, to many who haven't understood the site or the building, as we have, lived it for the year, so we've been working on it. So the yellow is the yellow, kind of the yellow, kind of that image there, you're looking at that facade, the green is representing the, the green arrows. On those two other images. Um, while I'm here though, I wanna spend a, just a quick moment, just talk about why this pattern is the way it is. Because sometimes in architecture, we just lose the, the essence and the beauty of, of why something's done, and just sort of make things for the sake of getting the thing done and moving on. And there's a reason for this facade and this pattern, you see the windows, there's three, there's three me, there's, sorry, there's two metal panel sizes. And two window sizes, and they're all the same module of each other, so there's only two modules throughout the whole pattern of those upper three, uh, two floors. Um, the metal has three, three color prints to them, so that mix of two panel sizes and three colors. Puts this beautiful splash of, of, of mix in here, and I think. The, the idea here is that they're drawn from the balance of both order and disorder that is inherent in molecular biology or pathology. So it's inspired, so the whole idea, the fenestration, the order, the disorder is inspired by the repetition and the variation of D N A sequencing. So it blends kind of this aesthetic rhythm with, um, uh, with a nod to the scientific process behind. What is genetic precision and, and pathology in itself, so. That's the kind of the big arc to speak story behind why the pattern is the way it is. It also gives us a functional. Way to move building, uh, windows around, add them, subtract them, um, when there's a wall in the way, because we knew we had a lot of components. That were, um, gonna splice and hit this thing in ways that if it were more glassy or more solid, it may break a, an, an, a more ordered window or fenestration pattern. We didn't want to have a building that looked too much like a ribbon of windows and standard like an office building, so. I think we've met the, the boat best of a, a lot of creativity here with, with this scheme. I haven't talked a lot about the rest of the materials on here, they're those same basic materials, we haven't introduced anything new. Um, I can talk a little about the program, at least from an out exterior perspective. Uh, in these two elevations, this, the large top, uh, center portion, that storefront glass is what we would kind of call the main entrance. And right now, since there's no public point of this building, uh, that's where the staff are gonna flow in and out. If, at a later date, the building becomes something more and needs to have something more generous or monumental. I think it's, it's a simplified start and can become something more and, and more gracious, um, for something more public. Uh, but this is a very economic and, and smart use of what is otherwise a pretty, uh, in the round kind of non-public building. On the right hand side of the image, uh, you can see a couple square boxes in light gray, those are, um, dock doors. And then just to the right of that, and you, it's, um, actually just below that, you see a little white bar that kind of goes across horizontally. That's actually the, the recess dock, so the trucks will back down in, disappear a little bit below gray, there's a wall that hides this. In C M U on the left and, um, everything else, the dumpsters, and those are in that, um, same graphite colored. Uh, ribbed metal panel and the screen off to the right, yeah, whoever's running the cursor, thank you. Um, this metal, the, the mechanical yard off to the right at grade has the same screening around it, so it should be a very simple, clear. An elegant sort of massing, we'll probably see a few mechanical components poking up and through, that's inevitable with this kind of labs building. Excuse me, lab space building, uh, whether it's a B vent chrome stack from a, an exhaust pipe or two, or, or whatever. But the equipment isn't expected to be much, A, above that height, we've, we've got it set at the same height that we know of now. And on top of that, it's all sucked in, if you look at the rendering off to the right from perspective. It's so in from the parapet that we, uh, you, you actually in many cases, like the middle rendering, may not even see the screen at all as you're approaching it by foot. So those may address some of your thoughts or concerns initially in these two larger elevations, any questions on these?
Only one would be just the. Apple stock to ensure that it's. We don't get the.
Yeah.
Many foot stacks that sit on top of the building.
And it should be shown, I mean, if it's not graphically shown on your drawing, it's part of the submission, it needs to be.
Well, I should. Got it.
Screen.
But you kind of imply.
Right, I know, yeah, well, that, that's what I was saying, it's like. I mean, if you, if you know, or stacks and.
You understand the intent. Yeah, I, I thought at one time, one of the elevations maybe had the, some of that rooftop equipment dashed in behind it.
I think they do.
I think.
Renderings.
Yeah, yeah. The, the ones that we submitted showed outlines of the equipment where it was dashed and it was below that fence.
How tall's the screen?
Uh, how tall's this scheme screen on top?
Uh, I, I just had that in my head, I wanna say fourteen, it's either thirteen or fourteen feet, if I was zoom in, I could see it in the elevation there, I can't quite read the numbers.
Oh, it is over here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four, fourteen feet maybe, I can't, I can't quite read that.
Twelve to fourteen, and I, I, for some, I have twelve in my head, but I might have that mixed up with another project, so.
No, I think, no, that's all in the mechanical, would be all in the mechanical yard over there. I don't know all of the, the equipment that's gonna sit on top, do you, Gabe?
Uh, no, the.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, most of it's, it's hard, but it's gonna be over here, this is the mechanical yard over here, off to the one end.
It's about fourteen feet.
Thirteen, yeah, I've got thirteen foot as a screen, correct, yep.
In the same, you know, in terms of dashing in, mechanical equipment applies, so you get the yard.
And there's no.
Yeah, we, we would not submit this, this is, the submission to the city will be quite, it should be, if it's not already in there, should definitely include that. I think we've, we've checked the boxes, we went along, so the, uh, and I'll apologize if I misled anybody on that, I, I certainly wouldn't. This is not a submission component, this is more of a qualitative expression, less technical.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we wanna see it on the tech.
Yep, very much understood, yeah.
If you want me to pull it up.
Nope.
I think.
Yeah, we're just, we're making the point, make sure it's on there, if it's not on there, get it on there.
Got it, yep.
Fairly positive business, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Give us the time, I wanna push you along a little bit, sorry.
Yeah, good, we're, we're almost done, let's go ahead and flip through the next page, um, the other two in this next page. We need to zoom out just a hair, so we can, um, just a smaller end renderings, this, the top one is the view from, kind of from bone and joint. So you see, you get the idea of the mechanical yard and the, the rest of the building, um. Yeah, standard stuff here. And we finish off with, um, if you go to the next one, just, uh, what we call a hero shot, just the sisters together on site. You get an idea of, um, we haven't done something so different or, or. Uh, deviated so much from bone and joint that it feels like, uh, it's been left behind or disassociated, in fact, has a very nice presence. It's not so overwhelming and monumental that it's calling people to it, so.
Those are, those are.
I told them, there's no way. More rain, more snow.
Okay, so that's, that's our presentation for today, I, I take the points, thank you for the, the technical information, I'm sure we've got her on top of that, uh, on the submission. Um, we'll take a look at anything, obviously, before we formalize and be, send it in front of you.
Comments, questions on the, on the building materials?
Maybe I missed it, but the rendering, the paper rendering we have in the office, that's kind of more of a, a natural, neutral. Wall panel color versus the kind of gray that's on the screens, which one represents closer to what?
That if you, there was the, the Pantone, pardon, pardon, the Pantone. Colors that they had on the, were much lighter, much more muted gray.
Yeah.
Three tones versus what's on.
That's good, because the, that rendering right there, I think was much more.
Yeah, this, this rendering is, the, although this is all stylized, this, of course, but this is, we're trying to be as honest as we can from the perspective of just saying, hey, let's. How does this look if we, if we, if, this was a quick turn too, by the way. But yeah, it's a lighter building, and in fact, the, the nice thing about the, this light gray as opposed to a pure white, where we said, ah, this, look at this, this is a brand new white building is. It's, it's going to allow atmospheric elements to settle and rest, we can't stop that, that's the, there's dirty, there's dust. Uh, dirty white, white buildings with lots of lines collect dust, and the lines show up, and then they look bad quick. With the gray metal panel and the variegation, those things hide, it's just simple logic. And on top of that, you know, the, it's metal, so it's gonna wash off a little quicker, and, um, it avoids what would look great in a rendering. And then not so great six months later, and a year later is, is constantly be needing to be cleaned to look beautiful. So we're just being thoughtful about all of that, and then we've got the shiny part of the frame, the jewel box frame, the aluminum, that's gonna put a little bit more, um. Glare when the sun hits it, and some of the, the shadowing with the copper, that'll, that'll kind of flash and kind of draw your con, your eye from. Anything that may look a little, you know, blotchy, and that's actually the whole point of the variegated patterns, to kind of help let this building have a perpetual life of not needing to be. Beautifully white, but still feel clean and modern and high tech.
Several architects on the board, they appreciate it.
They're still significantly different from the screen to the PDF that Doug is looking at.
Yeah.
The, um, couple things that, uh, just to, back to that point, that the technical drawing, the, the rendered elevation, that'll never be true to color ever. Um, so those technical drawings, they're always gonna be a little darker and flatter and washier. Also, when we print something out on paper, it changes every time, you know, even getting these colors right. Uh, if you right now took this and walked up and stood next to bone and joint, you, it would probably look a little oranger and a little redder on bone and joint. Um, but we're not blind to that, we're, we pay attention to it, so that's why I'm, I'm confident that the copper color is gonna start to feel like. An upgraded L, um, much more elegant sort of version that's part of bone and joint. Um, and also sort of fitting and framed in here with this newer lighter skinned building. I think it's, it's hard to capture the true essence in any media than, um, and that's why those samples are so important. And wish you had a, I wish I had a fuller board for you, but I think this, this helps you see the quality of what you're understanding here, um. I also hope it does.
There's a, the other thing I was gonna say, sorry, the other thing I was gonna say is that there's a, one of the, the renderings, a wall mounted ladder. At Harper.
Consistently, yeah.
Yeah, so.
There's a, uh, that's, that's actually, uh, well, there is a solution for that, um, and I.
That's the ladder inside.
The ladder, yeah, the ladder can go. The ladder can go through a roof hatch, um, I. I, 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 I certainly wouldn't argue that, I mean, honestly, it's, 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 it keeps the building from, well, two things was it prevents. A, it prevents the building from looking like, oh my god, this thing is, it's a new building, now we got this big utility end on it, because it screams utility, number one. Number two, if, if I was a person that was nefarious, I might decide that this is an opportunity to maybe try and get up there. Now, there's a lot to do to get up there, um, and the, the ladder's actually locked and preventable from getting on, so we, it's, it's, there's a, you know, that's the way the ladder's set up. It's got a, a, uh, a panel to close and lock. But if it's an issue.
Yeah, it's, it's an issue, it's gotta go inside.
That, that was the quick answer.
Okay.
We have a rope course too.
Alright, so. If there, I mean, any other comments, great, I mean, I appreciate the building, you know, what it is. We'll look internally about what we've gotta do on our end, you're gonna give us that ladder. We will. Do our absolute best.
I'm gonna call D U C too, and see if I can talk to them.
Great. But we're gonna do what we can to push forward on this one, you know, I mean. The best of our ability.
And we have, we're gonna do the same, so there's really no outstanding issues other than those that have been raised.
Yep. I mean, taking care of any of Mark's comments.
Mark's comments, the sidewalk.
Yep.
Um, the damn ladder.
Yeah. So we'll take care, we'll look at all of those things over the course of the next two weeks, you'll get us our letter, we'll. We'll do what we can do, I don't know, that, that's not a, a promise that on February thirteenth, we're taking any action, but. Gives us something to talk about over the course of the next two weeks, and see what we can do. It goes to the second meeting in February, then so be it, like, we'll give as much possible time as we can.
I guess I plan on going on, and we're really close on that line. What kind of permit? Do we need a full permit for the whole project? Partial permit for like a site?
I don't think we did answer that right. We're gonna discuss it.
Well, you know what, I think that's fine, but that's another question.
Yeah, exactly, I don't think you're, they're not prepared to start a full site construction, but obviously the time is of the essence to get the site cleared, so that, that's where it is.
We understand.
I submit a building from the application. While.
So the only signage that's part of the site point application is all the directional signage and stuff, and we submitted all the plans for that, the building signage. Any changes that are gonna be needed for monument sign and stuff like that, we're gonna have to come back for, because there's certainly gonna be variances probably. Because there's gonna be a common sign for bone and joint in this center, because there's, you know, it's all property, things like that.
The building sign applies with our signage, or you're just saying, we're not, we're not.
Yeah, we're not including, we, we show them place for it, but not, not a sign, we won't be.
We do make sure that as whatever review we have, no signage.
There'll be plenty of time between now and when that building is done to, to get it done, so.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Thank you, can I grab this?
Alright, we got, next up, we've got the U P S temporary modular operation.
Yes, hello. Uh, my name is Katie Strickland, I am working for U P S, uh, with the A and E firm. Who's putting together, who has put together this concept for you guys.
Yeah, Scott Caswell, Center Point, working with U P S as well.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Scott Caswell, with Center Point.
Give us one second to pull up the, uh, the drawing here.
Sure.
Uh, sorry, we need agreement, this is a, a referral up from the, um, Department of Development, Operation. I mean, so, and whoever what we call ourselves these days. I went back a lot. For a recommendation on this, um, temporary. Use, so this board does not approve temporary buildings or uses.
Okay.
But the, um, the pla, planning and zoning department will, um, issue basically a permit. And use our recommendation to allow a staging, kind of like a construction staging.
Okay.
It's just a longer period of time than usually Athens in construction, but, um, that's, that's the gist of it, right?
Alright.
Well, in the, in the, in the documentation that should be required, will not only show whatever temporary measure you need to put in place. In order to put this. Will not only show whatever temporary measure you need to put in place in order to put this. Temporary. Building there, but also restoration. You know, this will have to be brought back to. Pre-conditioned, but.
Either we're temporary.
Sure. And that should not be an issue. Uh, this is a, a modular building. It will essentially sit on small concrete. Um. Piers essentially, which the concrete piers are at grade. So it should be no difficulty to have it exactly. Back where it was prior to construction.
Fine, that's just, let me show that's called out.
Mm hmm.
All, the whole idea here is that in. Fourteen months with you've got. UPS facility, all the construction done there and you're back operational that this disappears and. You never know that it was in there.
Of course, understood.
So. When you're putting these, this modular building on, will there be any ground disturbance?
Uh, there will be very limited ground disturbance for the actual modular building itself. Uh, the piers are, are quite small. Most of the time twenty four inches to thirty inches in diameter. So the disturbance due to the building is very minimal.
But you will be expanding the gravel pad?
That's correct. Yes. Uh, disturbance for this mainly is the gravel and that small patch of concrete you have there.
Oh, probably need to do the DUC.
But the whole project disturbance is, is more than this for the whole project disturbance? Or that's it?
It's the reason.
We're talking about the ground disturbance now. So that's the triggering thing for the. And there's no threshold. It's just any ground disturbance?
And the reason the question is being asked is there's a new New York State regulation and I don't know if you're familiar with it. I don't know if you're based in New York State or not.
I'm not.
Yeah. So. I don't know what's to exploit.
Starting January first, there are new wetland regulations. From the state and they're no longer using an official wetlands map. And they're requiring all projects that will have any ground disturbance.
Mm hmm.
Admit with them for a harsel jurisdictional determination to determine if there are any wetlands that are. Um, regulated by the state. And that could take up to ninety days to do that. We're just finding out how this works this week. Um, so I would encourage you to submit for that as quickly as you can.
Yes, I submitted for that earlier this week when I was notified. So, no problem.
I sent an email.
I sent emails to everybody that we, we found out about this. I was just firing them off to.
Much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Completely melted down and canceled.
Finally, he's asking. Swimming everything, yeah. Stay with UPS here.
Yes.
So. With that. You know what? We're just going to make a recommendation. In the office at this point.
Yes, I mean, if it's fine the way you see it now, or if you want to wait till the next time and just to take a deeper dive on that, that is entirely up to you.
What other lighting are you going to have on site?
Uh, the lighting that we would typically have for this site would be attached to the actual MDC structure and meet all UPS standard requirements, of course. So that would be. Um, a minimum of two foot candles and, um, an average of four foot candles for. The width of the drive aisle. So it will at least go out to the pavement areas. That lighting. Now, if the lighting doesn't match or doesn't, uh, meet zoning requirements, obviously we'll have additional site lighting.
Yeah. So you're going to want a photometric that shows this site. Make sure that that's provided.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it does have lighting requirements. So, um, I recommend you to review those.
And I can send you those, Katie.
Thank you very much.
Do you have, um, like a truck circulation plan showups?
I do not have that on, on me at this moment, but I, it'll be in our plan set. I can send it to you, um. Tomorrow, probably. I can get someone to do that for you quickly.
That would be great. Thank you.
Perfect. And can I just send it to Eric?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Power for this building?
Sorry?
Power for this building?
Yes, power will come off of a, um, an existing overhead, uh, pole that's right on site. Uh, we're hoping to have a pole mounted transformer. To go on site.
But is, how big is this? I, I don't. Answer that my question.
Yeah, there's not a good visualization.
Well, there are some elevations on the next sheet. Um, it is essentially a PEMB building with dock doors loaded. On either side of the U-shaped structure.
It's temporary? They're putting it in and taking it down?
Yeah, yeah. It, it, it's going to be shipped to the site, they put it down, they use it temporarily while they take all their layer belts and all the other stuff that they're doing in. Inside the other building, out renovating that. Once that is all done, all the, that function goes back into the other space, that building leaves and it goes to another site that they're doing, by my understanding.
That's correct.
So, and just again to clarify, this is not the type of building or structure that this board would approve.
Right.
Typically, nor are, is this board going to approve it.
Right.
It's going to go straight as a, a temporary construction staging.
We're treating it, essentially the site mine is like a job trailer on a construction site. Something that is there temporarily while supporting a process that's happening in the other building.
You know, it's like the rope or anything, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. That's, that's why.
Do they have to take down multiple trees on that site? Or does it fit right where the current? Concrete is on the site?
The building fits, uh, essentially exactly where that existing gravel area is. We will have to take down a couple, a, a few trees to. In order to get that gravel, the extended gravel that we have there.
We should reduce the temporary.
So how long will it be there?
Construction staging.
I'm sorry?
That's what.
That might be better, construction staging building rather than a temporary building. Cause then I feel like we're going to get into this like. Well, you gave us a temporary, temporary is twenty years to us. No.
I think that's why the, this is just a recommendation and all of that is going to be in the purview of the planning department saying, you, you got to be done with your construction. This is not approved by the.
But it, it should be. The permit for the main construction must be tied to this activity. They have to go hand in hand. Because, by the way, this does, this does not exist but the other.
And that's what I'm saying. Like this has occupancy and it has exiting and all of those.
I think what ends up happening is this construction staging gets tied to certificate of occupancy. It's like, it was something you can't, there's no certificate of occupancy. You'll get the S building until that's gone.
But I, I'm concerned that this building also needs to be, like modular buildings aren't always meeting New York State code. So I would just have, as, as somebody who had to take. The code classes, I would be concerned that. This. Meets all of the New York State codes because not all modular buildings come meeting New York State regulations. They.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Lesser.
We, we've had. Yeah. preliminary meeting with UPS.
Okay.
And they indicated that's what's going to be.
Okay.
Right, I mean, the woman out here.
And they'll be signed and stamped by a licensed New York State.
When it comes in for the building, where it's going to.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, yes, so the manufacturer slash vendor will send it off to the state and have it approved by the state.
Well, that isn't how it happens.
Oh, just in addition to what you guys were saying is.
Yeah.
Just additional information.
Yeah.
The floor would be the state.
Do you need to clear any trees for this?
Yes, there will be some tree clearing. If you look on the site plan, you can see the tree outlines. Um, they're a little clouded areas.
So this is in the range of the endangered bats. I don't know if you've heard us talking with the other projects.
I did. I was under the impression that we were outside of that radius slightly.
One more.
Stay right there.
Uh. I just looked it up right now. It looks like you're right on the cusp of it. I will confirm that.
Okay.
Um, but.
Yeah, there was a better one.
Basically, you can't clear trees after March thirty first.
Sure, yes. I've, uh, dealt with the bats before.
So it does have, so. What will happen to the site when you are done and you need to mobilize? Is it, is it going to be returned to an open lot? Is it going to be landscaped? Because I.
It should be returned to its current condition, right?
But is this current condition a conforming use? I don't think it's a conforming use now. Is it?
Would it, is this lot used for anything currently or? It's a parking lot. It's storage. They like park trailers right up alongside the road. Yeah. It's not acceptable. Yeah.
Well, that's a question. That's a question. What, what, what's going to happen to the site after?
I believe the intention of UPS that it returns back to a staging area for their, uh, trucks.
Really question was never approved.
Like maybe we have them line the whole with trees. So when they want to go back and park their trailers. That. We don't.
But you can't.
Yes, across the.
Is, is that to the expanded limits or the previous limits?
Uh, well, it's that the trailers right now are parked.
No, 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 no. No, like after, after the construction, a- after they remove the modular building.
Uh huh.
Will the expanded gravel remain in place?
No, that should be removed and restored.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, so, but then I think that we would want it.
I, I want to take that one step further and. With the, the outline of the trees, the trees basically go to the edge of the pavement. So there will need to be restoration of whatever trees you're removing in order to put the gravel down.
All right. Do we need to have any kind of, uh, tree survey completed or will replacement of trees, uh, to a degree be sufficient?
How many trees are you removing?
We have not done a tree survey. I think whenever I asked in the beginning, it said it wasn't required at that time. So we haven't done a tree survey.
Right. They were asking and I said, we get on concept, you just need a regular survey, but. We need to extend. I guess I, yeah, I go back to what I asked originally. If this is business transitional, it's industrial. It is industrial. Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, we can't leave it if it's not complying.
I don't think so. That's not what that is, though.
So, is it a legal, is this a, a allowable use? If it's.
Oh, in my.
Parking lot, roadside parking lot.
Well.
Because I don't think.
Well, they just said it was a staging, a trailer stage.
Is it a.
It does, yes.
Yeah, loo- looking at the, um, county GIS site, I mean, that's been there since two thousand and three. At least.
It was hidden right under your nose.
Yeah, it, it, and it's got varying amounts every. You know, they have various years. If, as you go throughout the years, there's varying amounts of, uh. You know, trailers and things being stored on the site.
It's built at the process.
Check two thousand nine.
So I got, this is twenty fourteen. This will be twenty twelve.
There you go. There's a good one.
This is two thousand six. Two thousand two. I guess we'll say. We'll release the bill. Two thousand one deals we had.
Did you build it?
Press for it.
Peace.
You'll ship.
No.
No.
Well, we don't. Okay, I mean. Because we have a, enough to look at and we can talk about it and.
Yeah.
Yeah, figure out what we can do and where we want to go for the next meeting.
First of all.
Right. Any other questions?
Okay.
Great. So we're going to review a lot of, a lot of stuff. We'll give you some comments. This is concept review.
Mm hmm.
First time everyone's looking at it.
Okay.
So we'll get stuff back together and, uh. We'll give you a timeline of what we're looking at doing here.
Okay. And, uh, will that come with any kind of, uh, I mean, I know you guys talked about the landscaping requirements for. Post-construction. Will that include something along those lines as well? Great.
Just, just a quick question. Do you need water or sanitary sewer service to this?
We need water service to this. No sanitary. There is a water line along, uh, Skyly Road there.
Yeah, okay.
There's actually there for us. Okay. Thank you.
All righty, perfect. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, just getting there. Uh, we got Farmacan. This is an amended site plan, divorce and. Signage?
Yes.
So. There's. Do we have anybody online?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. This is, uh, Ari Goldberg from law firm at Barclay Damon. We're representing Farmacan and Verlife.
So give us the, the click over, what you're looking for.
Yeah, absolutely. So you might recall this project, uh, site plan was approved back in March of twenty twenty four and then the multi-tenant sign package. Was approved in August of twenty twenty four. The retail dispensary is up and running. I think during that, if I recall, during that initial review session. We had discussed that. We might anticipate future signage as they focus on getting operations up. Well, we're at that point where the future signage is here. So. Farmacan is looking to add one additional attached wall sign. It's considered on the rear elevation. Uh. The other signage is to remove this window film. Yep, that's the rear signage that's being identified by the cursor and that view is from Bridge Street. And then this is the other sign. This currently there's white window film along these three large windows that face Bridge Street. The idea is to replace that white film and add this. Uh, film with the Syracuse skyline and then the message, welcome to Verlife East Syracuse. Technically, uh, putting the window film on these three window panes counts towards our overall square footage of signage. And then the second wall sign is a, you need variance for the number of attached wall signs you have. So we're here for concept plan, but we're also eventually looking for a referral to the zoning board will. Where we will appear and discuss our variances with them. The ZBA is ultimately, is also familiar with the use, excuse me, they approved a special use permit for us as well.
What city is that? East Syracuse.
It's the city of Syracuse.
That's from where?
The lake. Uh, not a Syracuse resident could speak to it. I'll make sure that, you know, if.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
That's how.
The ones all the way to the left are the money towers?
Yep.
It's got to be state tower or what?
I don't know, but that would seem really cool compared to the other ones, like. And then, yeah, like they have all that, a nice walkway along the water there. Must be future. Future vision.
Yeah, I mean. If you're going to say it's the, first off, city of Syracuse, that's one thing, but we're also not in the city of Syracuse. We're in Duwitt, so. Which.
I, I understand the nuances of, of different jurisdictions. This is just part of their branding.
Okay. Um. And then you have a, another sign that you're looking for on the other side of the building, correct?
Yep, and that's going to pretty much match the existing sign on the front facade.
So. I'll start with my own. Comments and then I'll open it up with everybody else here. The, that particular sign on the back of the building. I mean, I think it's. Probably harmless. I don't see an issue in your brain in the building. It's not an issue. I have. Bigger issue with. The signage in the window. We are not. Fans. Of that, I, I. Of that, I I. It becomes what's the word?
A standard and everyone wants to do it?
So. The frosting glazing or the frosted film that you have on the windows, nothing in the graphics, no nothing, that I think is appropriate. In there, as soon as you add all the graphics and the welcome to East Syracuse. I do it, it's.
Put it aside.
They have bring up thirty eight.
About, yeah, the existing attached sign is about eighty square feet.
So you're for the window signs, you're allowed to have twenty five percent of the windows facing the road. Um up to the total one hundred twenty square feet, so they're looking to add with that remaining thirty eight square feet issue. Um that back building sign and these window signs mature.
Which is a whole bird, so that's the reason for going back to the Z B A.
So there would be that variance would be over the one twenty and then that rear sign, you only get one sign facing the road on which you have a driveway and they already have.
Right, so it looks like the total window film would be about a hundred and thirty two square feet.
Right.
Yes.
The one proposed on the back was about twenty eight.
It's a eighty one point six existing with that front sign, twenty seven point eight proposed on the rear. And then one thirty three inclusive of all three window panes, which makes for a total signage of two hundred forty three square feet. So that'd be one of our variances. That's from ordinance section one ninety two, one oh six F three A. That's one out of three of our variances. It sounds like the board was also discussing our variance from one ninety two, one oh six. H seven A, that's the twenty five percent measure. And then the final variance is for the second tap sign. That's under one ninety two, one oh six F four A. The other thing that I I wanna mention, and you may recall this from our site plan review. Is the three window panes have to have some sort of opaque film on them to shield from the product in the in the retail floor. Uh that's a state regulation. So a part of it is that makes us a bit unique. In that in that way, and part of it is we're gonna convert that into signage instead of it just being plain white film. And I think in one of the images too, if you um A T and T, the previous tenant also. Uh you know, they didn't have the same sort of regulations we had, but they did use that area for signage as well.
What did they have there?
It's in one of the images. Let me see if I can. I have my screen open too. I don't know who's controlling it, but I was.
Just because it's there, it doesn't mean it was.
I think they put that temporarily up after after they were with us. Yeah, like a temporary sign.
No monument signs on site, right?
No, correct.
No monument sign.
That one is that one's already in. It's the one on the back that we're talking about. So.
I remember talking about.
Uh just in terms of the terms of the numbers, if we talk about the one that sign there, which was eighty.
Eighty one point seven square feet.
Eighty one square feet. How big's the one on the back?
Twenty eight, twenty seven point eight.
So between those two, they would be under the hundred and twenty square feet. Right, so combined between the two of those, that that would only require variance for the additional signage in there if. That signage, the welcome to East Syracuse. Is not there.
And this is also going to require. Changing the multi-tenant.
What would that say? Two building signs?
It would have to add this additional sign.
I mean, we have, we have done two building signs for other, that that there's precedent for that.
That's the issue. I think what I think where I was going with that is at this point, if they just did those two signs, the only. Is just to get the approval for the second sign.
Often.
Yeah.
Identify it coming off of six ninety, et cetera.
Right.
I wanna ask a question about the the window film. If wh- what? Portion of it is what triggers it into the realm of it being a sign? So for example, if it was just the images of the skyline. Would that be the same as the film that was required with our initial approval? The audio was a little, I'm sorry if I did, if you responded.
I'll let you do that, I'm sorry.
We've done with the similar.
Yeah, I mean, we we haven't really done window signs. Besides, yeah, besides saying no, so having having the the window signage like that, using it as. A big graphic banner is not really something this board is applying to.
You know, let me ask you this, devil's advocate here is if there are a hundred and nine square feet, that means they've got eleven square feet left in the.
Yes.
Yes.
So I mean, I put my, how do I solve my problem hat on here? You put the white film on at the three window, which isn't a sign. Right, and they could do they do a eleven square foot band through it. Then it's delineated as the sign portion, or does it because it's on the film, does that mean it the whole thing?
I don't think so, because within film, I I mean. Places small window coverage, when film I don't think is is ever gonna.
I I'm agreeing with Jamie. I think window film that is not an image would not count as a sign. And I think that if you wanted to have words on it, the words would go towards the sign. So, you know, he's he's giving you a solution to your issue. You have eleven square feet. Or or your image, yeah. So I mean, you have eleven square feet to play with in those three windows and the rest of those three windows should be. A a film that meets your legal requirements.
That's the phone that's already installed, I believe. So maybe it even, we we can discuss with my client internally about.
It's installed, is that what you said?
There's one, my understanding is there's white opaque film now, because the. Yeah, sorry.
Well, there's other films, like white opaque film is like the the cheapest looking. Cheap film, but there's other films that are nice that you could put in the place that gives you the so opaque. That looks, but it's not an image, it's not a sign. It's a a film that has a nice look to it.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that we're not getting too far down the road of putting a decorative film in there that.
Right.
Right, it's gotta be.
But it doesn't have to be crystal light forty.
Right, right.
Use the armor film that's like.
So. Again, this is just.
Make the back side smaller and more.
So.
Yeah.
Direction wise, I don't know. I mean, I'll do a little straw poll in terms of signage on the back. Signage on the front, where we go here, I mean.
I think they would get the most out of the signage on the back.
Right, so signage out in the back, I don't know, does anybody have a real issue with signage on the back at this point? The direction they're going with that, and we can update the signage, the one to ten sign back which fine, the signage on the front of the building. You know, I think if you heard the comments from this board. Right, so you think you have enough direction to to update that before your next, and what are we on now, we're uh.
And and I feel like you might not know, but we've been cleaning up that road significantly with their out of. Compliance signs, because they're in right now for multiple permits and so we wouldn't give them their permits until they cleaned up their out of. Compliance signage.
We pay in this scenario.
What was that? Oh, is it the same owner? Same owner?
Okay, okay, no, I think the direction is clear that if if we can play with the eleven square feet remaining. Uh or come up with another more creative solution, uh that may be where the the board is more comfortable.
So, thank you. Uh we'll look for your kind of updated submission. All right.
All right, thank you very much for your.
For anything else that we need.
Yeah, we'll be in touch. Thank you all.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, I mean, the last stuff that we've got here, I don't know if Max is on or not, but we've got kind of the wind zone change. Um this was for, we talked about it on Tuesday, just as. Is there any further conversation that? People wanna have on that one? Your recommendation, read it to the town board, go ahead with that, no further comment. Uh this board has reviewed the request from the town board that it consider for recommendations, only change. From R one to R three along the small corridor of James Street affecting the tax parcels as being the proposed legislation attached here to. Referred to.
Everyone got, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh here to refer to as establishment of James Street, two to three family residential overlay district. This board agrees that this James Street corridor is unique in town and is the site of several two big family uses which are not specifically permitted. Although these conditions have apparently existed for decades and are suitable in the area. This corridor is red for code and legislative relief that recognizes the unique nature of the corridor. Its existing uses and the goal to have the properties uniformly with the kind of building ordinances. In the board review of this request, it has come to the board's attention that there was draft legislation considered for this corridor seven years ago. But which was not presented to the town board, rather than a zone change to a specific existing general district in town. And overlay would address the particular concerns of this area without being overly broad in scope, potentially threatening the uses. That would be that would not be desirable in this board. The legislation proposed would bring nonconforming and or noncode approved uses into conformity. Further, as to many of the two and three family residences, this legislation would either deem the properties inconformity in the area and structural requirements of the code. Or allow the same path for performance. This legislation is also unique in that three family residences would be recognized as conformant uses. Unlike the R three zone, however, greater than three family dwellings would not be permitted in this area. Accordingly, this board recommends that the James Street two to three family residential overlay district as attached here to be adopted by the town. Any modifications that I language? Recommendation? The motion to approve, Kathy? Play? On favor? Great, go to the town board for their next meeting. Moving that, what are the things we need to discuss?
Kevin seconded.
Kathy came back with the vengeance.
At nine oh five P M, people.